Five different bids, so I'm gonna read the different phases of what those totals are. Contractors submitting the bids, we have Pavement Solutions from Middleton, Indiana, Reeve Riley from South Bend, Indiana, and Walsh and Kelly from South Bend, Indiana. So for bids A, B, and C, Pavement Solutions was the only bidder. Bid A is $265,997. Bid B is $58,214. Bid C is $173,000. For bid D, we did not have any bids received. And for bid E, Reeve Riley was $520,800, and Walsh and Kelly was $91,200. So at this time, was there any bids submitted that were not read aloud? Hearing none, we ask that the Board of Commissioners accept the reading and opening of the bids and turn them over to Public Works for review and recommendation at a later date.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, please. Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Just for, uh, those were the base bids?
Those are the base bids, yes. And there's different, there's different aspects with each of the bid. Bids A and B is a slurry seal type product, bid C is a crack seal, bid D was an infrared patching, and bid E was just a resurface and mil per hour type cost. So it's just kind of an estimate of if there are areas where we wanted to do some little bit larger patching than what our highways able to perform. We wanted to be able to have a contractor provide us with material and equipment and labor costs to do that on a per hour basis.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion? Having a motion approved with our condition of the S.H.I.N.E. engineer regarding the receiving of these bids, a fiscal receiving these bids from both the Public Works or, uh, for processing and bond to such report we might receive from Public Works in the future?
Second motion, second, hold, please, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, turn to the Board of Commissioners. First thing is the account payable, do you have a motion?
I make the motion to approve the account payable, Dr. Riley.
Second, motion, second, hold, please, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passed. Next, add to the group of CGI Communications.
Good morning. Bill Schelio, Economic Development Offices on the 11th floor. Here today with a proposal from CGI Communications to prepare and develop eight video chapters, uh, with basically eight videos about St. Joseph County that could be used on our website and for other promotional materials. This company does this all over the region and actually all over the country. Specifically, they've done work in Elkhart County, and I believe that they're doing work also in La Porte County. Uh, I want you to mark today down in your calendar because today's proposal is a zero cost item to the county. What I'm asking for is your approval of this work as part of that signature of a letter that's included in the packet that would be then sent on to prospective purchasers of video advertisement, things like that, as associated with this contract. So what I'm asking for is your approval of this and signature of the attached letter.
Counselor?
I agree with you. It is worth no cost, I just, uh, from a legal perspective, please.
Any questions or comments?
Thomas, thank you. Counselor, did you notice that it says the expiration date is the third anniversary?
I did. I understand the long-term agreement. I did discuss that with the circuit board. I pointed that out. There's, there's a term in this contract.
What, what is the term? Three years, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It's that kind of uncustomary for the county. You know, thirty-six, ninety day out.
We would, we would definitely get a language like that and make considerations to sound like that conversation through the circuit board together, but it's just, it's really, there's no expense related to this to the county that was determined, so we'd be able to administer this after.
Um, there may not be a financial cost to it, but I'm concerned there might be a moral or ethical one. Uh, I, I did go, and they're not a local company. I guess they have offices in Chicago. In, in, the contract says, I think Rochester, New York. There are, I did Google them. I don't know if anybody else has been with them. There, there are some, uh, some dissatisfied customers who, uh, I think the word pimp was used, that although there is not a cost financially to the county, uh, if people are gonna go out and solicit money, because they, they, it's fine, they're planning, CGI wants to go after local vendors to then pay CGI money for a minimum of three years. That's all this contract is locked in for. And that these firms, the local firms could be, uh, uh, made to pay these, members could be advertising fees, which they don't have to pay. They don't have to pay. But if they get a letter signed by the county government, you're a valued business owner that, you know, we want you to pay money to a Rochester firm to have the glorious honor of advertising on these, on these videos, uh, I think we're, we're, we're losing something in our, uh, abilities to remain pure and objective when it comes to either, uh, you know, the, the selection of these businesses or the possibility that we're promoting one business over another. And that mainly we're promoting a business from Rochester, New York. Uh, again, I think there should be talent in businesses here in St. John County that I'm sure have approached, but probably do the same thing. Uh, in the past, I've publicly stated I would like to see videos. I like to see them for training, for orientation of employees. I like to see them for welcoming new businesses that they want to develop here. Uh, you know, there's, there are even citizens going their roadmap through county government, which could often confuse them because the county roadmap, uh, is, is far different from the general government one-on-one class they teach with the simple separation of administrative legislation and judicial. So, uh, not against the concept of videos, for the concept of videos, uh, not, not for using, uh, not a state firm, and not for voting that firm to make money, uh, with our endorsement. I think our government should not be picking winners and losers above who gets endorsements and endorsements. Thank you.
I'm not sure what half of that meant, but, um, so sensing, uh, sensing the temperature of the room.
Commissioner, I'd ask that this item be tabled to the next meeting, full regular meeting of the, the council, or the commission.
Can I inquire a question? Is it really, uh, trying to see if there's a solution or not a solution at my thought? Please, counsel, if we get a termination permission, if they're being terminated providing thirty-six, ninety-eight, thirty-nine others, and then everybody can walk away, is that enough to satisfy the legal concerns, or is it really just more of a, of a, of a fiscal, take support to city, or unfundable this firm from New York? That said, so I got...
I've got various concerns, counsel. The, the legal issues of the time, the fact that, uh, I'm sure we have local talent to do this, whether we pay them or not. I'd rather pay somebody, do a good job, and the experience of this community than to have some other firm solicit money from our local firms with a letter of support from our government.
I, I understand that. I was just trying to see if I could get some language built up for the term.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
That'll leave me with what you need.
I appreciate that.
Before I go down that road and spend time and resources.
I appreciate that.
So is there a motion to table? So move. I'll, I'll make a motion to table. Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. So I guess by default, the item is tabled. Right. Next up, youth leadership program.
Or not? Why not? All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, this...
Frank Fritia.
Oh. Frank Fritia, project manager for the Board of Commissioners, office on the 7th floor of this building. And I have with me the, um, some of the members of the committee that worked on this proposal before you. You'd all like to introduce yourselves.
Lisa Plensner, St. Joseph Circuit Court Administrator.
Vicki Brudzinski with St. Joseph County Archives and Records Center.
Brenda Matthews-Kavitch, Executive Director, CASA Program of St. Joseph County.
Commissioner Fleming convened this committee to come up with a proposal to help engage the youth of St. Joseph County in, uh, our local government, to help teach them about what we do here at St. Joseph County, and hopefully expose them to potential job opportunities that exist within St. Joseph County. So as they continue in their career, they may consider coming to work for a local government wherever they end up living. So this proposal lays out a, um, monthly meetings beginning in October of this year. It would be open to all high school juniors and seniors, and there is, as you can see, an attached application form in that we ask that a, um, leader in the community also submits a letter of recommendation on their behalf. We brought this up at the, um, department head meeting last month, and all of the departments listed here that were present are on board with putting together some type of presentation for the, um, students that get chosen for this program. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there effective questions? I did have some concerns or just wondering, I like to scope the debate, you know, I just don't feel that it'd be really successful, especially with there's so many other groups trying to offer youth other things to do, scouting, four-ages, partner, church groups, sports groups, gardening groups, uh, you know, there's inspire groups. So, uh, but seeing that you have the support of the three findings behind you, quite a great, uh, faith and admiration of their dedication to the community, uh, I guess I'm gonna be a positive over this.
Thank you.
All right. Um, and also I applaud Commissioner Fleming for coming up with, with this idea, with the group in front of us for helping bring it to fruition. I think it's exciting. One of the things that we struggle with in the county is how do we more effectively communicate the great work that happens here in St. Joseph County with, with, um, general, general public and express it with our youth. So it's fantastic whether we interject or if we bring, bring more fresh ideas and fresh ways to St. Joseph County. So is there a motion?
I make the motion to accept the recommendation regarding the, the nation of the youth leadership program.
Has asked. Second, there's a motion, second, hold, please, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, next, employee of the month program.
Before you Commissioners, is a program that I was, um, asked to put together from Commissioner Castellini, who was looking for a way to continue to recognize the employees here at St. Joseph County and all the hard work that they do. Once again, this was brought to the department head meeting this month for review of the various department heads, with, um, some of the changes that they suggested in here have been included. The purview of this is either a department head or two coworkers could nominate an employee who has been with the county for at least one year for this. The nominations would then be brought to the Board of Commissioners with the names of the person who made the submission, as well as the employee being recommended, redacted just like you do for your health insurance appeals, so that it is a completely, um, blind process, and the award would be based solely on the merits of the case, or merits of the recommendation, and not based on who would be receiving it.
So also add, once again, a lot of great things happen here in St. Joseph County, got a lot of great employees who do, um, work policies that we're trying to find more effective ways to recognize the great work that they do. So I guess it'd be, at least a good, good first step in, in, so. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you. Um, certainly it's a good program, you know, and I gotta wonder why in 200 years this county hasn't implemented this in the past. Uh, I know in the past, uh, the Board of Commissioners, when it was Commissioner Castellini, Loach and I discussed it, and at that time, uh, it was not implemented. Uh, there was concerns that with such a vast number of highly qualified employees, yeah, this one, maybe selected, uh, would be very slim. Um, it's kind of like, what, a twelve-year, we got nearly fourteen hundred employees. Uh, the concern that, uh, the Board of Commissioners used to put fluff on, but it might just be a campaign fluff. Um, certainly you have a lot of workers that are worthy of recognition. Uh, I'm not against the concept. Uh, I'm completely unconcerned. Counselor, do you want to make this matter?
No.
Okay. Well, apparently they want to gift the person $25 in some manner, and I think that'd be construed as, as ghost employment, paid without services.
How would it be ghosted?
Well, someone would pay for something, or discrimination that two people did the same job, someone else is getting the bonus, one person...
Commissioner, Commissioner Thomas, I did run this by...
Yeah, hold on, is that you? I think you may have a better counter.
I did, I'm sorry. I ran this by, um, Pete Augustino, and he signed off on this, and actually included some other language in there regarding the anti-discrimination and the fact that the Commissioners could end the program at any time. So a lot of the legal language in there was put in by Pete Augustino.
Any sort of letter from Peter?
There is not a letter from Peter, I'm sorry, no, I can't, um, I do have an email chain from him that I'd be happy to forward to you.
I would just, I would just appreciate that letter from, they don't want that mail to change, you know, just that, uh, that he's reviewed it and he thought that it meant, uh, probably they can stay, stay in the county laws.
Absolutely.
Again, that, that against the scope of the program, I, I guess I just, I'd like to hear what Commissioner Fleming has to say.
Sure.
It's just, it's, it's a whole bunch. Very anxious to such a year's long. So I'd like to hear what Commissioner Fleming has to say.
In light of that, and to get you the letter that you requested, I request that you table this until your next meeting.
Take no action with this table. They bought me a motion, thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
We didn't have a point, we, we don't need to vote, no action taken against St. Joseph County. All right, moving on to the key to the county.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to St. Joseph County. A lot of new faces here, welcome. Uh, we're here this morning at this moment to present the county to Nick Bolchum. Nick, starting with St. Joseph County Health Department on December 6, 2004, serving all 14 years as administrator for the Health Department. During his time with the Health Department, he has had a positive impact on his employees by being a positive, supportive, caring, and fair boss. Nick went above and beyond the duties outlined in his job description, and did so without question. Nick is a registered environmental health specialist, a certified licensed pesticide applicator, a certified pool operator, and a member of the National Environmental Health Association, the Indiana Environmental Health Association, the Indiana Vector Control Association, and the Regional Water and Sewer Board. Nick is well-liked by fellow county employees and has a great working relationship with the departments and the city council, county city building. Nick Bolchum has been an excellent asset to St. Joseph County and will be greatly missed. Although I bring it here, I add, well-respected too as a resource. Upon the occasion of Nick Bolchum's retirement, after 14 years of continued service to the residents of St. Joseph County, we welcome to up your neck, and we are proud to present this to the county in token of your sincere gratitude, in, in token of our sincere gratitude, and best wishes for your future.
Hey, I remember, I served on the county council when Nick was, uh, came here to us from Marshall County. We're lucky to have him, he served, you know, the Health Department, but, but the citizens of St. Joseph County very well. His institutional knowledge and demeanor will be greatly missed. We're very, very grateful for your service, and, and, you know, the key to the county is the highest honor that we're, we're able to bestow upon the citizen of St. Joseph County. So thank you so much for, for all your service.
Well, I want to thank the Commissioners, but I also want to thank my staff. I've met a lot of very dedicated staff, not only here, but across the state, that do their best, um, sometimes in very hard times, to do what is necessary to protect the citizens. And I really appreciate those people I've worked with for not only the 14 years here, but the 32 years in public health in the state. So, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Department of Human Resources, request approval of a state consulting group of gifts and insurance agency. That is, that has to be tabled. We've got a couple more things to work out with that, so is there a motion to table? So move. For lack of a second, got to table. All right. Department of Procurement, 2017, 2018, fiscal year, printed materials pressing attention through, 630, 2019, section one, continuous, two, labor cut sheets, three receipts, four unit sets, and five state forms.
Good morning. Bree Roberts with St. Joseph County Procurement, 7th floor of the county city building. So this is just merely an extension of our previous awards going forward for fiscal year 2018 and 2019. This will end 630 of 2019 respectively, uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Uh, thank you, Bree. Is there any reason why the items, the envelopes wasn't renewed?
Um, basically, as I outlined in the letter, just because of the difference in how they're printed, um, a lot of our departments have moved to our branded envelopes, be that color or monochrome. Um, they've opted to take on that change, and because the pricing was set for our previous samples, then we're unable to renew.
So is the cost of the new logo?
No. No, it's, it's simply that the sample is different.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion? Make the motion to accept the recommendation of the director of purchasing, Bree Roberts, regarding the, uh, line. Second. Make a motion, second, hold, please, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next, approval release of 2018, 2019 branded materials RFQ, this group.
Yep, and this kind of goes hand in hand, again, because our samples are different, um, and because we've added business cards which have not been on the print bid previously. Um, this is just basically a different way of, of getting this done. Um, I wanted to make sure that we have, um, economy of scale pricing for these items moving forward, um, and so this is the action we've chosen to take. Um, RFQ release will happen today, right after this meeting. I'll post it up on the website, um, and then it would close after a seven-day period on July 10th. Um, and again, that's a Commissioners' meeting on the 10th at 10:00 a.m. Um, and I've asked that these be submitted via email, just because it's a little bit less formal of, of a setup, um, and it's easier for me to kind of respond that way. Um, and again, these will be made available via the website. Any questions?
Appreciate you, my, so if you had, is, say, from a business card standpoint, you've had different departments going out, getting their own business cards, and that's so we can kind of centralize and warehouse that, so we can hopefully, um, save some money as we bring all this under one.
Absolutely.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, the assessment of branding, uh, which are good as a support, so, uh, you've got the, it's been rolled out, so.
So fairness, this is all business cards that are being, regardless of branding, this is taking place because even if we use, regardless of which logo we use, we have individual departments who are going out and doing it themselves, spending more money than we're doing, so.
Kind of big sub-offICE, we're bringing it out.
All right, fair enough. So then, is there a motion? Make a motion for passage. For lack of a second. So I guess we're tabled. Thanks, Bree.
Thank you.
All right, Department of Public Works, consent agenda, subdivision improvement performance by North Point Shores. Is there a motion? Make a motion for passage. Consent agenda? Motion. Do you have a second?
No, I'm not second to you. I made a motion. I will stop talking.
I, I made a motion. I guess you were, my comments weren't quite ready to make a motion. All right, so Dave, Dave makes a motion.
I was waiting for Madam Engineer to put the statement.
Typically, if it's a consent agenda, that doesn't indicate why it's a consent agenda, but, so, you made a motion for passage, I was second. Hold, please, signify by saying aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes.
Next, request approval of RNS 91601-D, maintenance asphalt overlay program, final change order. Madam Engineer?
Good morning again. Jessica Clark, County Engineer, offices here in the 7th floor, room 732. Uh, before you is our final change order for our maintenance asphalt package from 2016. Uh, we've been able to, to finalize all the quantities in coordination with the contractor, so we offer your, recommend your approval to accept this change order as a deduction of $485,114.88. The revised contract amount will be $3 million, $3,2503.78.
For lack of a decrease. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Jessica, and these funds will just roll back in whatever fund they came out of, R-N-R-S or Loach or?
Correct. Actually, again, when these projects were bid, we had bid aggressively on the type of program we wanted to provide, depending on what the prices came back in, then we would have to cut back, and that's basically more what happened, is we built to the funding amount we had and are just removing scope to be able to meet, match our budget amount.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments further? Is there a motion?
I make the motion to accept the recommendation, County Engineer Jessica Clark, regarding RNS 91601-1, final change order is outlined.
Second, motion, second, hold, please, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Request approval of RNS 91701-D, maintenance asphalt overlay program, final change order.
Likewise, this is our maintenance asphalt overlay program from 2017. Uh, the decrease of this change order is $327,980.84. The revised contract amount is $3,715,342.18. And again, it was a decrease based on just altering scope to match our available funding.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Yes, make the motion to accept the recommendation of Jessica Clark, County Engineer, regarding RNS 91701, final change order, maintenance programs outlined.
Second, motion, second, hold, please, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next, request approval to extend the maintenance agreement, J.D.A. Creek Estates.
Again, this is an extension of our existing program we initiated in 2015. We're looking to install up to an additional six RO units and then continue the two-year maintenance period that results, uh, roughly into a $5,100 expense with up to $10,000 for maintenance over those two years, depending on what is required in those systems.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve the extended maintenance agreement with plug-in regarding the J.D.A. Creek Estates issue is outlined.
Motion, second, I'm sorry, second, motion, second, hold, please, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next, request approval of supplemental design services, the grade number one, for the often trail bike and pedestrian.
Uh, the supplemental is to revise the design parameters on this project. As we started, BP Pipeline, uh, has an easement that is through this project, and through their course of review, they have determined that they're not going to allow the project to be built within their easement, so we have to redesign it to switch to the north side of the road, and this is a supplemental to accommodate the redesign based on BP's comments, and, uh, it'll be to perform these services in a mountainatic seat, $276,755. And again, this is 80/20 federally funded project.
Well, I'd like to take that to let you know that you're...
At least a year and a half.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, yes, I'm looking to study for your question. I will not ask that one. It's a staggering number. Madam Engineer, from your point of view, do you think that was excessively long time?
Well, we had actually, we were working back and forth with their, their engineers and administrative departments and making various... departments and making various revisions, so it would be acceptable to them. But at the end of the day, there's one person that signs off, and then one person decided to say no, so.
From your professional experience as our consultants, do you think that our offer was fair?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we did everything within our power to be to accommodate BP's requests, albeit completely removing their pipeline and reinstalling it for them, which I wouldn't recommend. And since that was not on the table, they said no.
Okay, I hope everybody remembers this next time, D P S.
Unfortunately, it's not the first time, and it won't be the last time that we have to work with them. We've had to encounter negotiation with them on other projects in the past, because it runs through our entire county.
Right, and sometimes they come to the, I don't know, it might come to the drainage board or some other aspect of how we're operating our programs. You know, different, like, sort of the elements and the delay in our project. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion for recommendation, Jessica Clark, county engineer, regarding design services agreement number one for the auto bike trail pedestrian facility, and is outlined.
Second, motion, second, hello, it's a favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Request approval of preliminary engineering right-of-way construction engineering services project award, approval of consultant selection for the Pierce Road reconstruction from U S three one to Miami Highway.
On June nineteenth, we received proposals for the design services for this federal aid project. We received proposals from American Structure Point, D L Z, Lock Mueller and Troyer. Upon review of the proposals and scoring information from N dot, the top-scoring proposal most responsive to the service is the Lock Mueller team, which includes Abbott Marsh, Christopher Burke, McCormick Engineering, and others. We further recommend that Lock Mueller be selected for the engineering services contract for the Pierce Road reconstruction project and give us the authorization to begin the contract negotiation.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion under recommendation, Jessica Clark, county engineer, regarding preliminary engineering right-of-way construction engineering services to Lock Mueller group, and is outlined.
Second, there's a motion, second, hello, it's a favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Move just a whole business request approval of engineering services agreement for the gas extraction system operations and groundwater monitoring at the Beverly DeCron Restoration Park. First, I need you to untable and put it back on the active agenda. Does that motion exist?
Um, when did it take, I'm sorry to ask.
It was in January.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, make a motion to table the item C.
Second, motion, second, hello, it's a favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Item is active.
Thank you. The agreement before you is to continue our gas extraction system operations and groundwater monitoring as required by I D E M at our Beverly DeCron Restoration Park site. And there's a typo I just saw. I mean, the word restoration. Pardon me for that. The work itself, it's a seven-year contract from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-four, not to exceed two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. We've reviewed the fees and deemed them reasonable for the scope of work, and it is something we're responsible for to continue.
Any questions or comments? And, Madam Engineer?
Is there any motion? Make a motion under recommendation, Jessica Clark, county engineer, regarding engineering services for the gas extraction at Beverly DeCron Restoration Park.
Second, motion, second, hello, it's a favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Finally, public comments. Are there any public comments?
I'll start with a couple. First of all, affairs still going on. The dairy barn is still the best deal. Secondly, we have young boy scout, Mr. Cooper here. If you want to come up, you don't have to, but if you want to come up and talk, okay? He's working on his communications merit badge from troop one twenty-two of the Osceola, Osceola Baptist Church. So a round of applause to young. And as you say, in America, we don't change governments with machine guns. It's just banter. And it'll eventually solve itself. Thank you. Hope you have a good impression of your visit.
Any other public comments? Please state your name, address for the record. You have three minutes to address.
Do I go first? My name is Beth Beagleback. I actually live in Valbo, Valparaiso, Indiana. I'm here today on behalf of K nine officer Flash. Flash is a five-and-a-half-year-old male, German Shepherd. Approximately, approximately one year ago, my brother, a K nine officer with the St. Joseph County, notified the sheriff that he had applied for a position with a private consulting firm to work overseas. Approximately two months ago, he was informed that he would, he was required to report for training at his new position on June eighteenth. At that time, he notified the sheriff of his upcoming departure, and he was informed that Flash's future with the department was undecided. During Mike's last week on the department, he was informed that Flash would be reassigned to a new handler. This immediately caused concern for myself and many others. As I stated earlier, Flash is five-and-a-half years old. He will be six on December twenty-eighth. When Mike and Flash were assigned as partners, the working relationship took months to cultivate, as Mike was Flash's second handler with the department. There were countless hours spent training and developing a bond that would allow them to work safely as a team in the field. My concern is now the stress that Flash will be under with this transition. He's not a young pup like he was with his assignment to Mike. A petition was started on change.org to appeal to the sheriff to allow Flash to retire. The petition, as of yesterday, had a hundred and ten thousand, six hundred signatures.
I'm sorry, where should we put that number?
One hundred and ten thousand, six hundred.
Wow.
As of yesterday. I didn't look today. The sheriff responded to the numerous inquiries and petition on their Facebook page stating that Flash was in a private kennel while a new handler is being chosen. I have pictures that I can give to you that were sent to me last, late last week by a concerned citizen of the kennel that Flash is actually living in. My concern is for Flash's health and well-being today and in the future. He became a member of our family, and I am fighting for him as I would any other member. If the plan had been to assign Flash to a new handler, I wish the transition would have taken place months ago to avoid Flash being put in the living situation he is in now. There have been many offers by community members to purchase or sponsor new K nine officers so Flash could retire, one being Karen Smith, who is with me today and will be speaking next. In the sheriff's response on their Facebook page, there was a reference to the liability of releasing a highly-trained K nine to a non-trained family member. I personally spent a lot of time with Flash and would have no reservations about signing a liability release for the county, that I would take full responsibility for Flash, his care, and his actions upon retirement. I'd like you, to thank you on behalf of the entire Beagleback family for your time and consideration. And I do have pictures, and I have the petition, the printed petition, it was five thousand pages, so I just printed you a couple pages of it, so you could see. It's on change.org, and I can forward you it electronically. It was just...
I don't think you ordered it.
It was a lot of paper, so.
For the county, you started by...
He did. Just three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago.
Yes.
No, it is customary, county assets or property taxpayers, the commissioners guard the taxpayers, and it's usually customary that an officer retires. The sheriff asks the officers to retire the revolver, and instead revolver to the, to the police officer. But in this case, it's not actually retiring, it's leaving to see the person. How long have you been involved with the first?
With the county, who's, four years?
Four years.
Four years. He had Flash for three. He was in the jail for a year, his first year, and then he was in the field.
Three years with Flash.
Correct.
You know, has been any talk about, is revolver being retired to him, or was there a talk of Flash being retired to him?
I don't know. I wasn't involved initially, you know, the conversations with the sheriff. I know he was upfront with them a year ago when he applied for this job, that this was coming. It was no secret to anybody that he was going to leave. It was just all the security, and it took a year to go through the Justice Department, everything to get secured to go overseas and work. So...
The dog's five and a half years old.
He is.
Then with the, your brother for three.
Correct.
You know what's the life of a control dog?
I mean, anything you look up, they say four to seven years. They say, yeah, and they say, you know, year four or five, you start watching the dog close to make sure he's as quick and agile and can respond as he needs to.
Right.
As the officer needs him, that the officer needs him to respond and...
Sure. Thank you. And this is Karen Smith, is it?
That's correct.
You want to comment?
Um, I own and operate two businesses within, oh, I'm sorry, Karen Smith. I am a resident in St. Joe County. I was approached early, late summer, two thousand eleven, by the St. Joe County Sheriff's Department to purchase a dog. I did that. It took about three months, and Panzer was presented to the sheriff's department. It's not an insignificant cost to purchase one of these animals, but the cost to the officer becomes a member of his family. They work, sleep, ride, eat together. I can only imagine the heartache that has been placed upon not only Flash as a K nine officer, to be separated from anybody he's ever known, to be put into a concrete kennel. There are no other dogs that I am aware of at that kennel. He's a lone member. He's all by himself, and he doesn't know why. Dogs don't think that way. I'm sure he thinks he's done something wrong. I am willing and have been approached to purchase another dog. I'm willing to do that today. The problem being, they don't have a handler. They don't have anybody qualified for a new dog, let alone one that's already been through two handlers. I don't know what the odds are of him bonding successfully with a third handler at his age, but I'm going to guess they're extremely low. I'm asking for Flash's freedom. Let him go home. Let him retire with his family, the only family he really knows.
And you bought, this dog in the past, and you're willing to buy another one?
Absolutely.
Including the cost of training?
Absolutely. It ends up to be right around ten thousand dollars.
Wow, that's very significant, very generous on you and your past commitment, pledge for the future. I see all the time in national news, the benefits of, like, post-traumatic stress disorder for, you know, military folks and military animals, and reuniting them here in the states, you know, the benefits. Getting this to hear you speak about the suffering of our veterans and veteran police officers, and for the dog's health, and for your brother's health, I think it's worthwhile for the commissioners to investigate this matter legally, possibly, to investigate the matter, and let's see what the sheriff has to say. Have asked, has been negotiations or even talked between your brother?
We have tried. The sheriff and I are playing phone tag, and at this point, I'm not sure who's it anymore.
And how long has that been going on for?
Week and a half, two weeks. It's been a while.
Is there any motion on that?
No, I think that should cover it.
I guess, I'd make a motion that we ask other departments to send a formal letter to the sheriff to consider letting Flash retire the manner described.
That's a legal issue, that's, you know, this one.
Well, something about to write letters, not a letter.
Unless I might need that letter to the sheriff and see if the county wants to do it with the dog, it's under his training period, so I won't do it.
Well...
You want a syndrome letter, you can syndrome it. I'm not telling Mike, because he's already by the way, so far.
Well, I'm sorry. It was a letter suggesting, it wasn't telling, it was something to suggest. Secondly, if it's a county asset, it is, would be under the purview of the board commissioners, just as a car will be revolvers. So, before you interrupted me, it was to, similarly pass it, if you consider the proposal of letting Flash retire, accepting the brand of dog, and, you know, this probably, there's no second, there's no second. So, and then you refer back to us.
So I guess, number one, I don't think that would be a motion. It's not a binding action, I would think. So if we would like to have someone on behalf of the board commissioners reach out to the sheriff department and inquire as to status and where they stand, and that's a more measured and appropriate approach, especially given there's still, there's communication and dialogue that's been taking place and still, and she hasn't been included. So I think if you would please reach out to the sheriff and get a sense for where this stands, that would be...
I'm happy to definitely report that to you, John. Is that fair enough?
It would be fair enough.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Motion to recess is in order.
A motion to recess.
Second, hello, it's a favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Tough luck. We are recessed.